We'll call to order the City of Douglasville's legislative work session for today, which is September the 3rd. We have already had our invocation that was given to us by Reverend Andrew Dickerson of the First Presbyterian Church of Douglasville at our special call meeting at 5:30 and our pledge allegiance that was given by Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller. So we will move right into our announcements and presentations and then we will proceed with the agenda as printed. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville's City Council Meeting. I'm Douglasville's Mayor Rochelle Robinson. Today's meeting is being conducted in whole or in part by teleconference. All of the elected officials and individuals with agenda items are present or on the telephone. Those wishing to comment during a public hearing or comments from citizens and delegates will be allowed to via audio on Zoom software or in person. This open meeting of the Douglasville Mayor and Council is being conducted by teleconference consistent with the Official Code of Georgia annotated Section 50-141G due to emergency conditions involving public safety in order to mitigate the transmission of the coronavirus and to reduce the risk of COVID-19 illness. That code section, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows local governments to meet by teleconference in event of the emergency so long as means are afforded for the public to have simultaneous access to the teleconference meeting. For this meeting, we are convening partially by Zoom software as shown on the city's website describing how the public may join, which is via YouTube media platform. These are the instructions for the public meeting. Applicants and all other participants be advised that this meeting will allow public comments as well, even if members of the public do not provide comment. Participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comments and listeners are not required to identify themselves. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. General instructions are this. This is a legislative work session where agenda items will be discussed only. We will not vote on these items until next Tuesday. Typically, our meetings are on Monday, but because of the Labor Day holiday, our meeting will be next Tuesday. If the business you are here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item comments from citizens and delegates section for you to discuss any other matters related to pending or potential city business. You'll have five minutes in that section to discuss anything that you would like to with us. You would come to one of the microphones, give us your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes to talk to us. Just a few protocol issues I'll go over and then we will proceed with the meeting. I would ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You'll receive a warning from the chair, and if you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result in the chair discontinuing your opportunity to speak. We would ask that only one person speak at a time. Please do not disrupt the order of the meeting in any way by having conversations with each other or the audience. Please address your issues or comments or concerns to the chair. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, I just heard some once, we ask that you would please put those in silent mode or power those devices off, iPads and all of that, so that they will not be disruptive. Now, this is how the agendas are going to be held and how the meeting will proceed forward. The committee chair person will read the agenda item. After that, the committee chair will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum time of 20 minutes for those in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those in opposition. Each person has five minutes to speak. If you have more people than the 20 minutes will lot, then you can split up your time and have three minutes per person, but we would just ask that you would stay to that 20 minutes in totality for each side, for those in favor and those in opposition. In order to speak, a council member has to sign a form that you must have submitted online prior to the meeting if you're not in person, and no forms will be accepted after the meeting is convened. During the public hearing, please state your first and last name and address, and then state whether you are in favor or against the item. And speaking virtually, staff will read your name into the record. Once you hear your name, please repeat your name, your first and last name and address, say whether you are in favor or against the measure, and then you can proceed with talking. We do not require minors to give us your address. Myself and council members were possibly asked for any additional information to help us make our decision next week, and then the committee chair will make a motion on all of that during the voting meeting next Monday, I mean, next Tuesday. So I believe that's all we have, make certain. Okay, so during comments for citizens and delegates, again, if you don't, if the item is not covered in our agenda, you can come up after when I open the floor for those to come forward and speak. So now we'll move on with the agenda as printed. There is agendas are outside on the table or there are the ones that are listed in front of you virtually. And let's see, so we'll move on with the agenda as presented. So our first committee will be Economic Development Committee, that's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to Item 6, which is Finance Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items tonight under Finance.
Mm-hmm.
I'll call that committee to order.
Yes, sir.
Authorize the mayor to sign an option agreement for the sale and purchase of real property to sell city-owned property at 6742 Spring Street to Airway Christian Academy. Mr. Thompson, you're going to help us with that item, sir?
Sir, Marcus Thompson, 6701 Church Street. So I just want to add that the notice of public sale was advertised on July 28th, 2020 for the sale of the 6742 Spring Street property. The city only received one bid, which was from Timothy Thomas from the, who's with the Airway Christian Academy, Inc. That's where you will find the purchase agreement. So let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Questions, council, Madam Mayor? No questions? Okay. It looks as though we've properly advertised it, and as you said, there was one bidder, and so we can move forward on Tuesday with a vote on that item, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Moving on to Item B. Authorize the mayor to sign change order number one with Russell Landscape Contractors LLC, amending the parties' agreement of December 31st, 2019, to add a scope of work to extend a drainage pipe for I-20 at Straight Route 92 Interchange Improvements Project. Mr. Thompson?
So besides landscape improvements, one primary objective for the I-20 project was to address the negative drainage flow throughout the swell areas. Being said, in the process of grading the site to drain for the West Brown On-ramp, there was a discovery of drainage structures covered in five feet of soil not evident in the survey that was presented. The structures consisted of buried headwalls and broken RCP, which is reinforced concrete piping. That broken pipe disjointed from the headwall is why there is existing punting condition within the swell area of the West Brown On-ramp. The change order request before you reference is the installation of 160 linear foot of piping to match the existing 50 feet piping expected to be remained. As shown in, and there's, I have attached a sketch so you guys can get familiar with what's being presented. In addition to a junction box with a manhole to interconnect both the new and existing piping in Batfield is also presented in a change order. Also, it includes a new concrete headwall and riprap where the new piping would daylight out into.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Just one thing that I noted in that, I'm assuming that that headwall that was covered in five feet of silt, five feet of dirt, will we be connecting to that and going back to the east for drainage purposes? Is that what happens? Do you know?
Well, that buried headwall will be removed and a new one will be installed, which is included in the change order.
Right, I see that.
Yeah.
But we're going to have to add a lot of concrete pipe to, I assume, to get it over the hump, for lack of a better word?
Yes, sir.
And that was something that was not able to be seen in the original quote, correct?
Yes, sir. And it'll stand to the east towards the underpass.
Yes, got you. That's what I thought. Questions, comments? Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Thompson, is this, is this the gateway portion of I-20?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And did we talk with the WSA? Is this a covert or this is corrugated concrete? Would all those materials and stuff have been approved?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll double check on that and follow back up with you on Monday for more of a confirmation, but to my knowledge, yes.
Okay, because I know, you know, it's always when there's water issues and replacing pipes and all of that to make certain that we are in line with what their requirements are because they change, and especially if something is broken and you want to bring it back, you may have to have a different standard. So I wasn't certain if we had gotten it approved from WSA before I signed the change order.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to understand, Marcus, is this, based on the pictures you provided, was this discovered condition after work was started?
Yes, it was after the work was started, and it was basically unforeseen condition. It wasn't picked up in the survey and as they were, because currently they're grading that area to drain, so they're trying to provide a slope, and as they were doing that, that's when the buried pipe and the headwall was discovered.
But was the headwall was added that's shown in the picture? That's not, that wasn't, that was a discovered?
That headwall's what was discovered.
Okay, it was a discovered headwall. I got you now, okay.
And that's why we have that issue out there now with the punting.
Got it, okay. Now I understand. Thank you very much.
Any others? Okay, seeing none. I'll ask if there's an issue with placing that on the consent agenda.
Mr. Thompson will talk to me. Knowing him, he'll have the answer tomorrow, so.
I'll retract that request. We'll wait until Tuesday then. If there's any question or any other discussion, we'll wait until Tuesday.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, moving on to Item C. Authorize the mayor to sign a recipient, sub-recipient agreement with the state of Georgia for the FEMA Public Assistance Program. Ms. Hardaway?
Emily Hardaway, 6695 Church Street, Douglasville. This item, we are receiving funds from FEMA in partnership with GMA for COVID-related costs, and so in order to receive those funds, we have to sign this agreement and send it to them.
Okay. It's a very long 18-page agreement that.
Yes, sir.
It's rare to read it, to sign it. But is there anything in particular? I'm assuming, of course, that if we don't do it, we don't get the funds, and is this a part of the CARES Act funding that we have spoken about, or this is something totally separate?
This is something separate.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure that we're all together on it. Madam Mayor, did you have any questions since it'll be your signature on it? Did you have any discussion you needed to have?
Ms. Emily is going to sit down and talk to me and go letter by letter, but the city manager has briefed me before, so I don't have any questions, but I'll make certain before I sign it that I'm responsible enough to have read everything.
Okay, others? Questions, comments? We'll take this up on Tuesday then in our voting meeting. And Madam Mayor, that's all that we have under that committee. Make a motion that we adjourn Finance.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I know Mayor Pro Tem was looking like we're not in committees, so.
We may be all out of words.
That's okay.
All of the time.
That's all right. We're not voting on it. We'll just keep moving. We'll go on now to Housing and Community Affairs, and the vice chair for that committee, I believe, is Councilman Davis.
No, I just have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. We'll move on to Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, that's chaired by Councilman Samuel Davis.
No, I just have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is Councilmember Watts on the line?
Flight delay, but he's on.
The flight delay. Personal Organization Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts. Okay. I know he wants to answer, but he's.
Watts, can you hear us?
I know, we'll move on to, trying to find my list. Okay, so Personal Organization Committee Vice Chair is Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one item this evening, and that is to authorize the mayor to sign a client and benefit advisor acknowledgement form with Cigna Corporation to lower the fee paid to the city insurance broker for health insurance coverage. And we do have Ms. Tia here to go over this with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tia Austin Bean, 6695 Church Street, Human Resources. This item before you, if you remember, over the summer, we had several presentations from insurance brokers as it relates to the future of broker services and cost. Our current broker, NFP, has presented to us a reduction in our fees under the Cigna plan, and so during that time, other presentations included lower commissions, and so this is their presentation to the city to do the same, to get on board with that same lower commission on the Cigna side of our insurance. And so we ask that the mayor is able to sign this agreement to lower our commission fees.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Are there any questions or comments, folks? Is that simple enough to add to the consent agenda then for next Tuesday? Got it? Yep, all right.
It looks like it's a go.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. Thank you, Ms. Austin Bean. We'll move on to Planning and Development Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several items tonight under Planning and Development. Some of them we may lump together, but we will start at the top. Item A, tabled from August 17th, 2020, hold a public hearing and consider a request for variances from the minimum floor area requirements of Section 3.07 of the Unified Development Ordinance for residential dwellings in the Planned Residential Development District to A, reduce the required one-bedroom unit size from 750 square feet to 650 square feet for a variance of 100 square feet; and B, reduce the required two-bedroom unit size of 1,050 square feet to 850 square feet for a variance of 200 square feet; and two, to reduce the required front setback of 50 feet in Section 3.07 of the Unified Development Ordinance by 25 feet for a remaining requirement of 25 feet on the east side of a lot of 6.29 acres on Stewart Mill Parkway in Land Lot 130, District 2, Section 5, Parcel 90. Application by National Church Residences LLC, and Ms. Patrice Williams and Ms. Kathy Zeigert will be presenting. Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
All right, Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. I'll make mine short, but just as a reminder, the National Church Residences is planning to develop a 96-unit, age-restricted apartment development. It'll be three-story building currently. The property is undeveloped, but at this time, I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Ziegert.
I'll be brief as well. I just want to update you as to where we went after our last meeting with the directive to look at the setback on Stewart, to see whether we should push that back to 50 feet. We told you we could, but we would prefer not to, and I'll be happy to explain why. This is the plan that isn't before you now, and Ms. Nicole Miller, so you are aware, there is no setback reduction on Douglas. So I think that was the street you were most concerned about, and it just sort of went over my head last month, and I should have said something, and I didn't. The other thing I want to point out to you is that although we were requesting a setback reduction off of Stewart, in actuality, from back of curb, you've got at least 40 feet. So it's because you measure from right-of-way line and not the street line itself, so from an appearance standpoint, that setback on Stewart will look very much like the one that is on Douglas. Now, the reason that we would prefer to do this is, A, we would like to hide the parking. We think it's more attractive from a perspective of living there and driving by there, from a concern about seniors walking through a parking lot to get to the road. I don't like that either. But most importantly and most compelling is, we discovered when we pushed it back, we would no longer have fire access to this side of the building, and as a consequence, we would have to stage out there, down Stewart and up here, but you cannot get to the back of that building, whereas now we have four-sided access. So from a senior perspective, once again, we don't think that that is as safe an alternative, and would ask that you consider that variance. I think we've discussed the other ones, and you all understand why we are requesting them. If you have any other specific questions, I will be happy to answer them or get answers to them for you before Tuesday.
Thank you, Ms. Zeigert. And if you would please, if you would give us just for our listening and viewing audience, just give us your name and address and your connection, please.
That's all right. Kathy Ziegert, 1230 Peachtree Street, Northeast Atlanta, 30309.
Thank you, and I appreciate the explanation you've given us concerning the variance and the setback. It makes, it makes most sense to be able to have access all the way around the building, although I think I was, I was the one that was concerned about cutting that frontage or that requirement back. I understand totally now. Okay. The applicant has spoken with new information. I would request that anyone that comes forward, whether it be for or against in this public hearing, that you would please do the same. So if we have anyone that would like to come forward and speak in addition to the applicant for this, this application for the variance and for the setback reduction, please come forward. If there's anyone else here to speak for, seeing none, is there anyone here that would bring new information and speak against this application? I welcome you to come to the podium now, please. I'm going to move along quickly. We've got a lot of items to cover, and it's a long meeting. Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. Is there any question or comment that council may have of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Estes, go ahead.
Just for clarification, I see, and because we have multiple items for this project tonight, I see in the first item, it's listed as 6.29 acres, and in the other two, it's listed as 6.312?
It should be consistent throughout all three.
That's what I was thinking. I was just wondering what the.
It's actually, yeah, I believe that it's the, what is it? The bar?
I mean, it's a minor difference, but.
Yeah, it should be consistent. You're correct.
Okay, so 6.312 is the correct number?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Councilman Estes. Any others?
Was it advertised? How was it advertised?
Williams?
6.3.
So it's a typo in A?
Typo on Item A as to 6.29 should be 6.312. Our previous councilman, Mr. Siegel, would have caught that earlier, and Mr. Estes, you've done a great job in taking up on it.
You're taking over his mantle.
Yes. I'm sure he'll get a call. Any other? Seeing none, then we will close that public hearing and move on to the next item. We'll take this up on Tuesday. Item B, tabled from August 17th, 2020, hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from GC General Commercial District to PRD Planned Residential Development District for 6.312 acres, Stewart Mill, Stewart Parkway Land Lot 130, District 2, Section 5, Parcel 90. Application by National Church Residences, care of Catherine Zeigert, and Ms. Williams is here to help us with that.
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. I'm just going to go ahead and defer Items B and C to Ms. Ziegert.
Okay.
Just agree to take B and C together, is that what you said?
I, I.
No?
No, ma'am, we did not.
Okay. I don't really think there's anything we can add to our presentation in conjunction with Matter B.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here that would like to speak for or against this item? We will take those that may want to speak in favor of it. Again, it being a public hearing, you do have the opportunity to come to the podium and speak, and I believe as our Madam Mayor has told us, you would have five minutes each, is that correct? Anyone here that would speak on behalf of the applicant in this application? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would speak in opposition to this item? Please come forward. Okay, do we have any questions or comments from mayor or council concerning this item? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I was just asked the applicant, I did have some information that was not, some not great reviews, so did you have any comments about those, and just in general, not to say any disparaging remarks?
Between when that was brought to my attention, and now I have not had enough time to speak with persons at the company, but I would say this, this is a HUD program and a DCA program.
Yes, ma'am.
We are a preferred provider by DCA, which is not at all typical. HUD does a very, very thorough investigation before issuing any grants, and this is not our first grant that we have received. In fact, it's not the only grant we've received this year. So I am confident that I will be able to answer any questions about any negative reviews that might have been seen by Tuesday, and it will be my intent to do so.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, and I don't want to say anything disparaging or disrespectful to any applicant, but I can't ignore if, you know, we have some, we don't want anyone to come in and have a great project, and you're such a large developer that it could be a perception that with those comments, that the large developer would bring a project and then leave the project, and we want to be responsible to all this.
Yeah, and the other thing I'd remind you of is that what, we basically keep these properties, we don't sell them. We don't leave. So we are in it for the long haul, and it behoves us to keep the properties very, very well-maintained and a very good service to the clientele.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Sure.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
And also, in light of that, if there are issues that were brought up, I'd also like to know the context as well. So like if, you know, if you have X number of complaints or whatever per tenant, you know, what is the national average? How do you compare to others?
Sure.
That would be helpful for us to know that.
I will work on it all weekend long.
Thank you.
Ruined my holiday.
Oh, no!
We can do that.
Anyone else that would have a comment, council or Madam Mayor, any others? Okay, then we'll close that public hearing for Item B, and we will move on to Item C. We'll take up Item B also on Tuesday. Tabled from August 17th, 2020, consider a request for a final plat approval for Sweetwater Point Residential Development for the purpose of subdividing into two tracts for 6.312 acres on Stewart Mill Parkway, Stewart Parkway and Land Lot 130, District 2, Section 5, Parcel 90. Application by Aubrey Akin Technical Survey Services Incorporated. Ms. Williams, any other comment on this item?
Please do upload a memo for Marcus Thompson for your review.
Mr. Thompson has given us some information here. Is there any, would the applicant have anything else to say concerning this, since it was tabled? With any new information, any other information you'd like us to have?
I don't know what his memo is dealing with, so I'm a little hard-pressed to address that, but I would point out to you that this was the second item that you wanted addressed before it was brought back to you. We at sort of the last moment, last time, increased the amount of acreage that was going to be in the property to be developed, and as a consequence, there was no plat in front of you, and you asked that we go ahead and get that platted, put the plat application in, and that's exactly what we've done. So the size of the site is now 5.026 acres, and the small parcel to the bottom is one and a quarter acres.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I think the purpose of that was for us to be able to have a true picture of what you would be developing and what amount of property you would be placing those 96 units on, I believe it is. Comment, question? Anyone? Madam Mayor?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we will take that up on Tuesday as far as the final plat. Any, any other question on that item? Okay, moving on to Item D.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Hope you have a great weekend. Item D, tabled from August 17th, 2020, hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from RLD Residential Low Density District County to PRD Planned Residential Development District City in the Quality Growth Development Overlay for 15.59 acres on 5011, 5029, 5049, 5059, Reservoir Drive and Land Lots 24, District 1, Section 5, Parcels 10, 11, 74 and 76. Application by Kenneth Wood Planners and Engineers Collaborative Incorporated. Ms. Williams and Mr. Joe Fowler would represent the applicant. Ms. Williams, can you help us?
I can. Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. With this item, the applicant has withdrawn their application. You should see a memo from their attorney, but however, they do have plans to resubmit, But however, they do have plans to resubmit. So we will see the item again, but it will look differently.
Okay. I would assume then, Ms. Williams, that items D, E and F would all be connected. Am I correct?
They're all three were withdrawn from the applicant.
All three have been withdrawn from consideration for tonight and Tuesday's meeting then, and they will come back.
Correct.
Okay. So is there any question, just simply because it was tabled and now being withdrawn? Is there any question or any comment that anyone would have? Mr. Mayor Protem?
I think that we did have a town hall meeting. You and the mayor were there. I think we had made some progress with the developers. I think they addressed a lot of the issues. I can't, I won't speak for everyone on this, but I do think they did address a number of the issues that were brought up by the residents and neighbors in Heritage Valley and in Arbor Station. Just a matter of, now let's see what they come back with and see if they actually follow through on what we talked about.
Yes, sir. And I understand the reason for the withdrawal is that they have to then go through this same process with all three of these items at the same time with the new plat that they have decided to present to us when they re-present. Is that correct?
That's correct. If we send the rezoning over, we have to also have, we have this in the annexation and the rezoning to the county at the same time.
Yes. Okay. So we're just trying to follow the rules the county has placed on us when considering an annexation of their property in the city. Okay. All right. That means that then, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. We can then skip over D, E and F. And we will go to item G. Consider a request for approval of a development plan for Wellstar Douglas Hospital Pediatric Expansion for 19.94 acres at 8954 Hospital Drive, located in Land Lot 48, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 3, for plans dated July 30th, 2020. Application by Ellerby and Associates Incorporated. Ms. Williams?
All right. Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. The applicant is on the phone, but I'll go ahead and get started so he can get ready. The item before you is a non-residential development plan for Wellstar Medical Hospital at 8954 Hospital Drive and Land Lot 49, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 3. The applicant, Ellerby and Associates Incorporated, is seeking a significant expansion per city of Douglasville, U D O, Section 10.07. The proposal currently depicts an expansion of 7,000 square, 7,000 square feet dedicated to a pediatric emergency department and allowable use at this location. The applicant has submitted proposed exterior elevations and a site plan. The applicant's land disservice permit will be processed and reviewed after the development plan has been approved by the city council. City staff has reviewed the application and attachments and has determined that the proposed plans meet development requirements of the U D O.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. So the review has been done and as far as the materials and so forth and requirements that we have as far as a development plan, they are within reason and are approvable, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you say that we had someone on the phone that would like to speak?
Ms. Garrett is on the call. Garrett, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I am.
If you could, Mr. Garrett, please give us your name and address for the record. We appreciate you calling in and we'd love to hear from you concerning this.
Garrett, Sol, there. 1313 Ashford, Ashford Parkway, Dunway, Georgia.
Do you have any comments or any information you would like to provide us with in addition to what you have sent in as far as the site plan, development plan?
I do not. It's pretty self-explanatory. It is a 7,000 square foot expansion to the hospital to serve as a pediatric emergency department for the hospital.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Anyone would have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Garrett, for joining us on the phone. And it's really not, just like an overarching question. I served on the Wellstar Hospital Board for about seven years. And I think this is part of your plan where you were expanding like the cardiology, the maternity worth where women could do birthing for having their babies and now the pediatric section. Is that part of the whole plan for the campus?
Can you repeat the question?
Oh, okay. I was just saying that is this part of your whole plan to expand the campus? I know that you were doing the cardiology, emergency for the maternity area, the birthing center that was, I believe was last year, and now the pediatric center, just to bring all those services to Douglasville and your Wellstar portfolio.
Yeah. This is, this is what they read also that everyone says. I'll, I'll answer that question. Yes, we, we have been working with Wellstar Douglas and, and looking at their master plan. So this, this is a part of that. And we've taken into account the future growth in, into this design so that it'll be easily expanded in the future.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate you bringing those services to the citizens of Douglasville, Douglas County. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Now, Mr. Chair, you know, putting architectural renderings in front of me is like putting a bone in front of a dog, right?
Oh, no!
No, no. I just want to say, I think, I do actually kind of like the drawings they provided. It's, it's got some character and it's got, it seems appropriate for a pediatrics unit. I like the little touches of color, playfulness that they've got. So I'm pretty happy.
Yes, mark this on my calendar, is correct. Anyone else have any comment, question of the applicant? Seeing none then. Okay. Is there any other comment that anyone would have, public comment? All right, we'll take this up for approval then on Tuesday night. Move along to item H. Consider a request for approval of a development plan for Tributary at New Manchester Village Center for 43.5 acres on Riverside Parkway and Market Street. Land Lot 162, District 1, Section 5, Parcels 1 and 2 and 20 through 29 for plans dated July 30th, 2020. Application by Juan Fernandez, A H S Residential LLC. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. The project is part of the original Tributary D C D in an area that was originally designated as Village Center with a base zone of G C. On August 17th, 2020, city council approved a request for a change in zoning to amend the special stipulations of zoning to allow a maximum residential density of 10 units per acre and to allow minimum residential floor area of 500 square feet per unit. Provisions for the development of the site are contained in ordinance 2020-40. The proposed development plan shows a multifamily residential development with a total of 437 units, 420 units and 17 lofts distributed between seven buildings with a, with a building height of five stories. The site plan indicates 13,500 square feet of existing retail, the upper floors of which will be converted to multifamily office space while the first floor remains retail. The site plan also proposes, proposes an additional 5,000 square feet for future office space and retail. The total project development area covers 24 acres. The minimum unit size is 500 square feet. A total of 716 parking spaces are proposed. Amenities includes a clubhouse, pool, playground and green space. The proposed development plan meets the requirements set forth in section ordinance 2020-40.
Thank you very much, Ms. Williams. Is there anyone here to speak? Is the applicant by chance?
The applicant is with us tonight. Ms. Sellers is going to speak to it.
All right. Ms. Sellers, you want to come forward and speak to this?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Julie Sellers, 1776 Peach Tree Street, Suite 390 in Atlanta, Georgia. As you will probably recall, we were before you last month. I'll keep this brief. I do have materials. It's the same that you have in the packet and it's really the same that you saw when we were going through the presentation for the zoning. Since that was just last month, in the interest of time, I didn't want to be redundant. We've really appreciated working with the community, working with the staff as well as council members. And we're really excited about this project. I did want to make one correction, and I'm sorry I didn't pick this up, Ms. Williams, earlier. The unit size, the minimum unit size is 550 square feet. And I think there was maybe a typo and one of the residents brought that to my attention. And I did want to just make that known on the record. I think the zoning is the 550. So just to be clear, we're not trying to do something different with this application. Again, I'm happy to hand out the materials, certainly happy to answer any questions that you all might have and really do appreciate all of the hours that, that really went into making this development, the opportunity that it is today. And appreciate that from everybody that was involved.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. My computer has just died, so I'll pick it up on paper. And I appreciate having the paper here. Ms. Williams, you had mentioned that the development plan had been, had been approvable as far as materials and so forth. And so we're looking at approval of this on Tuesday if, if we vote to do that. Are there any questions that anyone here, staff, Madam Mayor? Yes, Councilman Estes has a comment. Go ahead, sir.
Ms. Sellers.
Oh, thank you. One thing that we have not addressed previously that I'd just like to, to get some clarification on. I know originally we talked about how to handle the flow between the existing community and this new development from the entrance there at the back. You know what I'm talking about?
Is, as far as the, I believe that it's shown on some plats, the, the drive, and let me see if I can pull it up. Would it be okay if I go ahead and hand out the packet of information just, or if you want me to just reference the development plan exhibit sheet 1A here?
We should have it. We should have it. Should we not?
Let me make sure we're looking, talking about the same thing. Okay, so instead of going out this way, you're adding this back here and continuing out into the existing.
I may end up asking Alex, who's with Kim Lee Horn, who's here tonight to come up and address, but I believe in Alex. Please correct me if I'm incorrect. The, what you see on the site development plan is consistent. This is part of the plat that the, the, I don't want to say original because I don't know that it's original. This, this area's had a lot of changes, but it is the current existing plat that does have an access road shown on the plat that would provide some connectivity between the tributary neighborhood that kind of runs back along behind this development site and that would connect into the development site.
So it's going to go behind the new development rather than just using the current connection on the side? I mean, it's fine. I just want to clarify.
I'm going to defer to my engineer. I will never pretend to wear an engineer's hat.
That's always a good idea.
I'm Alex Hensley with Kim Lee Horn. It's 11720 Amber Park Drive, Alpharetta, Georgia. So the intent, there's an existing driveway in the back that it'll be connected to that connects over. We will not be utilizing what was platted originally as this, the major road.
So along the, the western side, is that going to be fenced?
It's, it's not going to be fenced. That connection will remain.
But it's just going to be open, so you could walk that way?
Yes. The way that everything's laid out, you know, your primary egress and ingress into the site will be from the front.
So it's on the side and not in the back, in the rear?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I understand now. Okay, thank you. One further question. On the eastern, the easternmost entrance to the parcel, which is right next to the existing building, the sight line there particularly coming out, it's on that apex of that curve. And it's really hard to see. Is there any discussion of how that can possibly be improved? Whether it's from, you know, removing, I don't know what landscaping and other such things are...
That's something we'll look at as part of the development plan is look at any existing landscaping trees that may be hindering that.
Particularly if you look towards the west, if like if you're, and you look to the west where the red crosses across the street, you can't see but about, I don't know, 30, 40 feet down Riverside. And if a car's going 55, it's not, it's not pleasant trying to jump out in there. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sellers. We appreciate it. We will take this up on, on Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
All right. We are then on item I. Consider a revised final plat for Tributary at New Manchester Phases 3 and 4, Lot 73 and 74 for the purpose of revising the lot line between Lot 73 and 74 for 4.71 acres in Land Lot 176, District 1, Section 5, Parcels 215 to 16. Application by Michelle McCauley, La Crawl Engineering. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. This is a housekeeping item for two property owners. Staff has reviewed the application and attachments and have recommended a, an approval for this item. But the applicant is with us as well.
Okay. Would the applicant like to speak? If so, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. And I understand we do have someone that would like to speak that is calling in virtually. Is that correct, Ms. Hampton? Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michelle McCauley. I work with La Crawl Engineering. We're located at 3475 Corporate Way in Duluth, Georgia. I'm here on behalf of our client, D.R. Horton. They are building a home in the Tributary Riverbanks neighborhood. And as in discussions with the neighbor, it's on Lot 74, the neighbor requested if D.R. Horton would consider giving them some additional property in their yard so it'd make it easier for them to access their rear yard. So if you see the, if you see the drawing, it basically shifts the lot line around a little bit, gives that neighbor, if you see on that back corner, it's kind of very narrow. This will allow them to put a fence up and make him, so they can get their trash can from the front to the back easily. So D.R. Horton's in agreement. As Ms. Williams said, it's a cleanup between these two neighbors and both the Rivera, who I believe may be on the phone calling, and D.R. Horton request that you approve this.
Okay. Ms. Rivera, are you with us?
Ms. Rivera, can you hear us? You have to unmute. Ms. Rivera, you're very, your sound is very muted. We can't hear you. You're still very muted.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rivera, we cannot hear you.
We cannot hear you very clearly, Ms. Rivera. I'm sorry.
What I can just say is that Ms. Rivera and her husband had signed the plat, which authorizes us to move forward with the application. So both property owners have signed it. And that's probably her.
Well, basically, Ms. McCauley, you are here representing the builder for Lot number 73.
Correct.
And Lot 74 would be the beneficiary of the increased size.
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Williams, in the reduction of size then in Lot 73, it shows a new area, 10,725 square feet, still well within the minimum required. So nothing is affected there as far as them then becoming an illegally sized lot within that development. Got you. Okay. Questions, comments? Yes, Madam Mayor?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman. And thank you so much for coming to present and, and having that information for the Rivieres. I do, you said that you were doing an adjustment so that they were able to have their, their backyard access or driveway to get their receptacle?
Not their driveway. It's just so they can literally walk on the side of their house to the back of their yard while staying in their yard.
Okay.
So that, if you look at the drawing, it basically just makes the shape of their house. It makes their house, and so they, they're, I think they plan to put a fence up so that they can walk within their fenced on their yard beside their house.
Okay, so the receptacle...
The very back corner, it gets a little close.
The receptacle was not going to be an issue to get their trash. I know we have those special trucks that we paid all this money for to get.
Yeah.
So we'll be able to get back into their home.
You won't need to get to the back. They'll bring it to the street.
That'll be a front one, not a back alley. Okay.
There is no alley at this particular location.
Thank you so much.
That I'm aware of. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Then we will move on to item J, the last item for our committee tonight. Consider a request for revised plat approval for the Tributary at New Manchester Village Center for the purpose of adding private right-of-way labels and extending right-of-way behind Lot D 89 for 14.45 acres at Riverside Parkway and Market Street in Land Lot 155, District 1, Section 5. Application by Steve Ostervor, Tributary. Ms. Williams?
All right. Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. This too is a housekeeping item. Staff has reviewed the application and attachments and has determined that the proposed plat meet revised plat requirements of the U D O. The applicant is with us tonight if you have any further questions.
Good to see you, Mr. Ostervor. Is there anyone here, Madam Mayor or council, that would have a question for the applicant? We understand from Ms. Williams' comments that all seems to be well. And it looks as though Mr. Ostervor would like to speak. So come forward, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Steve Ostervor, 3270 Darby Drive, Douglasville, Georgia, 30135. Before you is a, a small revisions of a plat that you approved back in May. It's basically extending the property lines to include an alley behind Lot D 89 and clarif- It's basically extending the property lines to include an alley behind lot D eighty-nine and clarifying some right-of-way issues. In the review by staff, I just need, we're looking for one clarification. And on the plan that should be in front of you, there was a zoning chart that was removed from the previous plat to this plat. And that table is included on all the other residential plats within Tributary and they're not being changed. This plat includes some residential lots that I'm just, I believe staff made some comments and wanted that removed. And I understand it has to do with the DCD zoning and the PUD. So just looking for further clarification on that matter. And I just want to make sure it doesn't affect D.R. Horton when they build the residential lots because that chart indicates setback lines.
Ms. Williams? Thank you. Ms. Littlefield?
Mr. Adams asked them to remove that because their zoning will state what the setbacks are and that's where I prefer to see it. I don't want ever for us to make a zoning change as to the zoning per se that might repeal a plat because it has zoning information in it. I don't mind for the setbacks to be shown, but anything that is strictly zoning, I would prefer not to see in a plat, which is meant to show the division of the lots.
Okay. Mr. Osterberg, I don't know if that helps you, if that's, I don't know.
Like you have a confused look like I do.
I do, honestly, I do.
And I'll be happy to talk to Ms. Littlefield between now and Tuesday to get further clarification. I just want to make sure that, that, that residential lots on here aren't affected by some of these changes. So if you guys are okay to do that before Tuesday and Ms. Littlefield is available, that'll be fine.
That's fine with us. Is there any, are there any other concerns, Ms. Williams, on this plan? Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Osterberg, do you want it on there or you don't want it on there? What's the?
I, well, that's a good question. I just want to make sure because I'm concerned that when the builder goes to submit for permits and everything, that those setbacks aren't going to be applicable if they're not listed on the plat. So I think they should be, but I under.
Yeah, Ms. Littlefield said don't want zoning to be on the plat. Okay. Okay, so you all will get an understanding.
Yes.
Ms. Littlefield, is that satisfactory for you?
I'm fine to talk with him. Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other comment or question concerning this application for revised plan approval? Okay, we'll take that up on Tuesday. Thank you, Mr. Osterberg. Appreciate you being here. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to item eleven, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening.
Thank you so much, ma'am. We'll move on to Public Relations Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No business this evening for public relations.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, I have quite a few items. I'll start with item A, table from August seventeenth, twenty twenty, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with block group INC. for security camera services for the Public Safety and Municipal Court Building. Major J.R. Davidson.
Thank you, Chairman Davis. Mayor and Council, J.R. Davidson, Douglasville Police Department, two zero eight three Fairburn Road. This agreement was before you, August seventeenth. It was tabled. At the time, we were going to get two cameras installed. These are security cameras, LPR cameras, and we have increased that number to twelve and they're going to be placed in different areas throughout the city.
Oh, good. Mayor and Council?
Yes, Chairman, Mr. Davidson, I assume that you don't want everyone to know where those cameras might be, but in increasing from two to twelve, obviously you've, you've come up with some ideas for much better coverage.
Yes, we have a preliminary plan in place as of today that we hope to refine over the next week.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Major Davidson, good to see you. And so with the twelve cameras, you all, there is data from other municipalities in the region that this connectivity and you've gotten some data back from this company. I know that it will be new for us to have their services. So do you have any reports or any kind of feedback from their services?
Yes, ma'am. Crystal Creek is one neighborhood in the city that already purchased the cameras on their own.
Okay.
But like you said, many other jurisdictions have these. There's, I think, six thousand across the country right now just through this company. And we have been able to use it to identify vehicles that were involved in crime and were able to get tag numbers when we only had partials to start with
Okay.
and identify vehicles that were involved in crimes.
Very good. Okay, so thank you so much. You got good recommendations in from other places. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, any other council members? Chief, I met last week and he gave me a good report on these. And I appreciate you all getting twelve instead of two.
Sir.
I'll be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, may I put this on the consent agenda for Monday after the council will?
Looks like it's consensus.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item B. Hold a public hearing to consider request for a change in agent outlet manager and and a transfer of alcoholic beverage license for the retail package sale of wine, malt beverage, and spirited liquor at the following establishment. Current licensing, RSDP Hospitality LLC. Proposed licensing, Ma Chakia LTD Company, DBA Corner Package Store located five nine nine zero Highway ninety-two. Current agent outlet manager, Rash McKenna. Just, computer just went. Hold that thought. Okay. I got my paperwork. Okay, five nine nine zero Highway ninety-two, current agent outlet manager, Rash Patel. Proposed agent outlet manager, Deshaun Patel. The required fees have been paid into the financial department. Will Mr. Patel please come down, sir?
That's on Patel. I came from my nine nine, five nine nine zero Fairburn Road.
How are you this afternoon?
That's good.
And right now, we have to go into a public hearing. Hold a public hearings for, for those who will speak against you having the licensing change. And that's five minutes. At this time, we're going to the public hearing. We have no takers, so we go five minutes for those who speak for you in changing outlet. Like we have no takers, so we'll close the public hearing. Any question from the mayor and council? Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you this evening, Mr. Patel. How long have you been, so you're changing from the proposed agent outlet manager to yourself? How long have you been doing this type of business for a package store?
I have business right now. It's convenience store, so I will go to the new business in liquor store.
So how many years did you say?
Oh, I will sell in the last eight years.
Oh, eight years. Okay. And what is your procedure for checking for IDs and all of that, you know, for the legal age of drinking?
We always checking ID in a, not a twenty-one's age of twenty-one.
And so you check their license and?
License and especially the license main.
Yes, sir. Do you, is there some type of program on your, your cash register when you check out? Or you just, you automatically check everyone?
Have the POS system to check the license and make sure the, with the birth.
Yes, sir. And all the employees do the same thing? They have training?
Same as a training, yes.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you so much. The police department, have we had any issues at this location? Are they here? Major Davidson must have stepped out. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other council members? Thank you, Mr. Patel. I've been there and I've watched your procedures and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Come back on Monday. Madam Mayor, item C, adopt the ordinance to amend section ten dash one of the alcoholic beverage ordinance to adopt a definition of school and to amend subsection ten thirty-nine, D ten seven eight, D and ten one oh six E of saying ordinance to revise the permit starting time for package sale of alcoholic beverages on Sunday. Mr. Shane Byrd, madam?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Shane Byrd, Finance Department with six six nine five Church Street. And today, we're just presenting a minor amendments to our alcohol beverage ordinance. Essentially, the first part is to clearly define what schools are per the official code of Georgia. And the second part is to essentially amend the Sunday sales for retail package of alcohol to the, from the current hour, starting at twelve thirty PM to the amended hour of eleven AM.
Oh, eleven AM. Okay, and any?
Name time is church.
I see Mr. Estes just smiling. So do I have any council members like to say anything?
Is it the state?
It's the state.
So we're just mandating to what the state says.
Any other ordinance want to come down? Mr. Siegel, you got anything to say? Come on down. You helped me push this a long time ago.
Richard Siegel, nine nine zero five Ashford Greenway. Yes, the governor signed House Bill eight seventy-nine earlier this year, which basically says for those communities that already have Sunday restaurants on premise sales at eleven o'clock, approved by their voters and already have Sunday package sales approved by their voters, that you can now allow your package, which we're talking about package stores, supermarkets, convenience stores, all the retailers who sell alcohol, they can now start at eleven if you, all you have to do is pass an ordinance for a resolution. It doesn't have to go back to the voters. So really, it's a housekeeping thing. It puts the retailers on a level playing field with the restaurants for ninety minutes earlier. Also, what you don't have in your red line, which you can still consider and make the changes, the ending time. You can add another half hour on the end time. So instead of your current eleven thirty on Sundays, you can go to midnight on Sunday. So ninety minutes earlier in the morning, half hour later in the evening, you're talking two hours. So it's nothing. So I respectfully request your favorable consideration for this item and I will have my seat now unless there's any questions.
Oh, Mr. Siegel.
It's good to see you.
Okay, one other thing. Couple of years ago, when the council put on the ballot for the public to vote on whether or not restaurants should be able to serve earlier on Sundays, a comment was made at that time, it might have been by me, that expect something to come back in a couple of years doing the same thing for package sales. Well, it's not the same thing because you don't have to put it before the voters. You can do it yourself. But the other question was, then what? What's next? We're getting all these different changes happening. I don't see anything coming after this in terms of Sunday sales. I know there's people who would like Sunday hours to be identical to the other six days of the week, but the legislature nor the governor has any appetite for that. If that happens, we're talking ten, fifteen, twenty years from now when all the people who currently run things have retired. So this is it for the foreseeable future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Eleven o'clock is enough time. If not, they get it on Saturday. Okay, if that's it, Madam Mayor?
He's doing communion on Sundays at eleven o'clock. That's what that's for. Okay.
Okay.
Councilman Watts, do you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am. I'd just like to say that I do have a comment, but I'd rather save it for Tuesday when I'm there in person.
There now.
No, he wants to save it. Don't force him.
All right.
That's all you have.
Anyone else? Okay, Madam Mayor, I'd like to put this on the agenda for Monday. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have a question for Major Davidson. Thank you so much, Mr. Shane and Ms. Mandy. For the applicant prior to this item for the allocation of fifty-nine ninety, Highway ninety-two, have we, have we had any infractions at that business for package store? Any concerns with the police department?
I apologize. No, we have not.
It's no problem, but thank you so much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. So.
Mr. Chairman, one other question. Now, you had asked, you had asked for this to be put on the agenda for Tuesday. I'm assuming that you did not mean to request it put on the consent agenda. No. Okay, just want to make sure because Councilman Watts did have a comment he wanted to make. So I was hoping that you were not, I would not agree to put it on the consent agenda for Tuesday since it's night.
Put it on the agenda, back on the agenda for Tuesday.
Okay, for discussion. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Well, we'll move on to Recreation, Culture and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on to item fifteen, which is Technology Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Technology Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. We'll move on to item sixteen, which is Transportation Committee. The vice chair is Mayor Pro Tim Terry Miller.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Mayor, we have several items on the Transportation Committee tonight. The first is table from August seventeenth, twenty twenty, is to adopt an ordinance to enact Article Three's Chapter seventy-four of the Code of the City, of the City of Douglasville to provide for installation of speed bumps on existing streets. Mr. Thompson is going to have some information.
Thompson, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. All right, so this item is presented to you guys tonight, I guess, to address the Councilman Miller's remarks, comments from last council, last round of council meetings in regards to the providing more details for the property owner as far as condominium goes and duplexes and all that.
And Mr. Littlefield may want to add in some comments to that as well?
Sure. I know that the councilman's concern had been about lots that have multiple families living on them. I referenced the UDO, which shows that a duplex is a single-family residence, so it's already included as a lot that would be considered with regard to the resident's desires. The change we made, though, was to include condominiums, which are not single-family residences because there are so many on one lot. It's now included in the ordinance. However, to get around the problem of having to consider multiple signatures and to get multiple signatures to have that lot considered with so many condominiums on it, what we did was to say that the condo association will sign instead of the individual owners for condos in that way. Condo lots are, are considered, but there's some, some efficiency in dealing with them.
Okay, well, I appreciate our counselor for clarifying the language on that and I think that makes a lot more sense now. Any comments or questions from members of the council? All right, well, I saw, we'll put that one on the general agenda for, for Monday for a vote, I mean, on Tuesday for a vote on that one. Next item is to adopt a resolution to amend the city's livable centers initiative, the LCI, plan to incorporate the previously adopted Fairburn Road Streetscape Plan. Ms. Williams, enlighten us, please.
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. This will just allow us to apply for potential funding from the ARC if we adopt this resolution. You've already adopted the plan.
Okay.
That's it?
Sweet and short. Anybody have any questions or comments? Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. Just, Ms. Williams, just a brief overview. I know you're, you have all of these just at the tip of your fingertips to give us. So just for the viewing public, if you can give them an overview of what the project is.
Okay.
For Fairburn Road Streetscape.
Okay, I'll just read what I have written here then. The Community Development Department submitted this plan to City Council for approval on June fifteenth, twenty twenty. The City Council approved the plan. The Fairburn Road LCI final plan is to be considered to amend the livable centers initiative study area. The proposed study covers Fairburn Road and Veterans Memorial Highway. This presents a unique opportunity to continue the improvements and redevelopment activity within the existing LCI area, area and to connect the downtown area. This plan reflects changes due to State Route ninety-two relocation project.
Yes, ma'am. So that would just bring all of those plans together visually so that the streetscape that we talked about earlier with Mr. Thompson under for ninety-two and I twenty, the downtown area and Highway ninety-two, this is right in the middle of all of that. So all of those areas will be improved
Right.
with this LCI study for possible funding from the ARC. But if not, we're going to do it.
We're doing it anyway.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, vice chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions or comments? I will recall from, I think it was my first term on City Council in the, back in the Paleozoic era, I made a comment that when Highway 92 bypass was finished, that we were going to have to do something with Fairburn Road because that was going to be our new gateway into the city. And it's pleasing to see that this plan hopefully will soon come to fruition because it really, it's going to make a difference, it's going to be a game changer for that section of town. I mean, the landscaping and the infrastructure improvements are going to be major. We, when people come in, they're coming in off the interstate and you're going to get onto 92, you're either going to hit the bypass or you're going to go into town. And we've got to have an inviting entrance way because that's going to be our front door. And if you, you know, if your front door is battered and beat up and not taken care of, people, you know, well, you might keep telemarketers away, but you do want something that's inviting for people to coming into the city. So that's, I think, that will make a big difference. I just want to mention.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Unless there's any objection, I'd like to put that, this item, be on the consent agenda for Tuesday.
I don't see any objection.
All right. Finally, Item C, which is adopt an amended speed limit ordinance with revised speed limits for Riverside Drive and West Stewart Mill Road. Mr. Thompson, quick question before you begin. There's a chart that you included. It has speed limits on there. I just wanted to clarify. Are those the existing speed limits or those proposed speed limits?
Those are existing. All the changes are made to Riverside Parkway and West Stewart Mill Road.
Okay. So go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead with your presentation.
Evening again. Marcus Thompson, 6701 Church Street. All right, so Douglas County has approved revisions made to their speed limit ordinance regarding Riverside Parkway and West Stewart Mill Road. The county would like to proceed with the installation of new speed zone signs for both Riverside Parkway and West Stewart Mill Road, but so much of it is within the city limits. Being said, the county will wait to install the signs until the city has approved and signed its own ordinance with the approved recommended changes from the county and GDOT. The changes includes transitioning the speed limit for Riverside Parkway from 55 miles per hour to 45 miles per hour, in addition to extending the length and miles of the new speed limit zone from east of King Drive to east of Summer Lake Road, 0.19 miles, and from Rock House Road to east of Rock House Road, 0.3 miles. Also, the county is looking to change the length in the school zone for West Stewart Mill Road from a point north of Parkway South to a point south of Parkway South from 0.39 to 0.25 miles. And we have attached the revised ordinance for you to review.
Questions, your comments, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And just for the citizens that are viewing and hear, when we have those joint roads with the city and county, the county takes precedence over the city and they are asking for our buy-in, which I think we are really pleased about Riverside Parkway in particular because the speed on that road was prohibited for, and not really safe for citizens who live in the area. We have a bike trail there and it was kind of, it was a lot with the trucks and all of that at 55. So we're excited to see 45 miles an hour and on the other roads as well. But glad that we're trying to be more responsible and bring the speed down to have it to be a little bit safer for the residents. That's all I have, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Marcus, one of the streets you have on this list is in my neighborhood, Creekwood Drive. And I've had a number of residents approach me about reducing the speed limit on Creekwood Drive. And currently, according to our chart, it's 30 miles per hour. And can we discuss bringing that down to, say, 25 miles per hour?
At your pleasure. We can get with the police department, Marcus can, and we'll bring an item to you next round.
I think, I think there's been, especially in light of, you know, some of the developments in the community, there's been a lot of concern about cut-throughs that people have, which are definitely fair concerns. And so I think that, at the very least, let's start, you know, as we look forward, let's look at reducing the speed limit on Creekwood. I think that, you've already got speed bumps on there. You're slowing the traffic down to begin with. Let's get it to, let's make it consistent with that, okay?
Yes, sir. We'll have an item for you next round of meetings.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, I apologize. I know in the city, when we do new signage, we use, we put like a flashing sign or something around the sign for, just to bring their attention. So if the speed limit changes in those areas in the city, are we going to alert the citizens so that they won't be ticketed thinking that they're, you know, maybe not paying attention while they're looking at the signs? And it was 55 and now it's 45 and they may get a ticket because they're going past the speed limit. Is there anything that we would do to advertise or put flashing signs that say the speed has changed?
I think that's a good idea, at least on a temporary basis. I don't think you want to do it permanently because people who live in front of that sign are going to go crazy flashing light in their window all day long. But yeah, I think it's a good idea initially, just to draw people's attention to it. Yeah.
Like we did right here on Church Street. We had a stop sign that we replaced and we put the flashing sign there for a little while and then we've taken it away. But it was bringing attention to, there's a new, there's new signage there. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any additional questions, your comments, or concerns? Being that the Creekwood item is separate, they'll be coming up separately, so that's not part of this. So just so everybody's clear, that's not an amendment to. Unless there's any objections, I'd like to put Item C on the consent agenda for Tuesday. Okay. Madam Mayor, that's all we have under the Transportation Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. I appreciate it, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any other business to come before council members from the elected body? There's two items that, the one item that I, Mr. Toby Foster talked about was that I did a PSA to regretfully say that we were not having the Labor Day Parade. And I am sorry about that. I apologize to the citizens. The Shriners are the host of that and we partnered with them and they decided not to have it. And so just because of COVID-19 and socially distancing and all of that, they didn't want to take the chance of people gathering in the city for that parade. And we've had it for many, many years and we apologize. I know we did not have the Fourth of July Parade, Wednesday Wind Down, Taste of Douglasville. It's just the time that we're in and hopefully we'll, once a new normal comes and a vaccine, we're able to come back together. But we apologize that we're not able to have the Labor Day Parade in conjunction with the fireworks. We thought that we could have the fireworks from Fourth of July and bring them over to Labor Day. But if we have those fireworks in West Pines Golf Course, we know that citizens will gather because they're excited there and at the mall and at Walmart. And we just don't want to take that chance. So out of the abundance of caution, we're just not going to have those festivities this year and we apologize for that. So that's one thing. And then the other point of business is that the police department is continuing. They're going to start back their community enrichment programs. And it's the one they're having, upcoming one to September 10th at 7:00 PM at the 8304 Hollis Street Precinct Community House there. So the chief wanted us to make certain that the citizens and community knew that they're having that community enrichment program again on Hollis Street in September. So, okay, I will move on then. We have updates from city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Chief Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Susan Littlefield.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. The Chief of Police, the Police Department, Major Davison.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. Just to let you all know that under Citizens and Delegates, you do have a citizen online waiting to speak, Ms. Jennifer Fitz. So when we get to that point, she has comments. Also, as it relates to your military hearing, one of the things that I would recommend to you all to consider as we get to the fall and your meeting with the delegation, Ms. Karen Carolyn reminded me that the law to advertise when you, in the situation that we were in, is just fairly recent, within the last 20-plus years. So when that law was changed, it can be changed back. So one of the things you may want to talk to your delegation about, considering in light that most jurisdictions are very much like us, especially during the time when revenue shortfalls are in various areas, that maybe possibly they allow for a break of having to advertise if your rollback rate is under a certain percentage, for instance, a 3% or below. So if you all may want to consider that, reach out to your delegation, reach out to your fellow council members and peers and mayors across the state because I'm fairly certain most jurisdictions are like we are. And if you do remember a few years back, we had to, we ended up rolling back because the percentage was so low. It was about less than 1%. So just food for thought as you reach out to your colleagues around the state. And with that, I'd just remind you that we do have executive session following this meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, city manager. We do have a staff report and it's legal alternatives to deal with panhandling. And that is the Community Housing and Community Affairs Committee. The vice chair, I believe, is Councilmember Sam Davis. Is that right? But this is from Ms. Littlefield, so it'll be legal alternatives to deal with panhandling.
Yes, ma'am. What I want to do tonight is to refresh you on a discussion that we had earlier with regard to panhandling. I know that occasionally you get citizen complaints who feel like they don't want to be approached by someone in a public place asking them for money. The law on that is fairly clear. That is a First Amendment free speech right that people have in a public place to say what they want and to ask for money. So you can't prohibit people from asking for money in a public place. Now, some cities are doing, are outlawing something they call aggressive panhandling, but that's not the complaint that you've had. If a panhandler is essentially assaulting someone while they ask for money, then that's something you can outlaw, but you haven't had that sort of complaint yet. There are other ways to deal with panhandling, however, other than simply outlawing it outright. If a particular person is a problem on private property, such as in a shopping center, the shopping center can ban that person from coming there. And thereafter, after they've had warning, it's trespass. And that is an offense for which a person can be arrested. However, I think you want to approach the idea of dealing with panhandlers as criminals from a more comprehensive standpoint. If someone is so poor that they are a panhandler, it may not be a deterrent for them to go to jail where they can have shelter and a free meal. I think there are probably other societal ways that you want to try to deal with it if you can. If you need me to approach the topic more broadly than panhandling, please let me know. But I understood that to be the most recent citizen complaint.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you so much, Ms. Littlefield. I asked that you would give this report to the council because I have received just a few calls and it's not like a plethora of people calling and a great number, but it's been a little consistent with the pandemic. I think the more people are out of work and, you know, we'll see signs at some of the shopping centers, Ross, Target, Burlington's, Walmart. And I know those are private property facilities and businesses, but the citizens are concerned that when they're shopping and we don't want to have a perception that when you're going to shop and spend your money, that someone else is approaching you. So just being sensitive because I know, you know, it's a blessing. It could, I could be homeless myself or panhandling. But we didn't want to be aggressive, but we didn't want to have an understanding, you know, for the citizens that are concerned when they are trying to shop and someone's asking them. So we really, it has to, if we, so the owner of that property, if it's Longhorns or whatever and someone's out there, then the management would have to ask that person not to panhandle, correct?
Yes.
And if they continue, they can do a trespassing, no trespassing? And that is something that is a police department can follow up on?
Well, what they need to do is to tell them to go and not come back rather than don't panhandle. Because what you're looking to do is to make an arrest for trespass, for being there.
Okay.
Tell them what to say or not say, but you can tell them to not be there.
But on the interstates now, the police department, can we just ask them to move along? Or, you know, if you're stopped at the interstate and you want to come on to one of the city streets and someone's out there with a sign, how is that, is that with the police department, Major Davison? Or that's legal or we can't do anything?
Can't do anything about that if they're not obstructing the street or they're not in large numbers so that they're obstructing the street and they're not getting into the street and being unsafe to traffic.
Okay. Well, do we, we have an upcoming meeting with the county and the city and some of the Judge Beau McLean and others about the homeless in the community. I know there's several people that are kind of taking up Sharehouse, Pastor Ford, Sanctuary Village, all of those, so that we can try to help citizens when they're down on their luck and need someplace to go. But I was trying to figure out what we could do in the interim with folks that are maybe asking for resources for the citizens. Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Littlefield. Anyone else have any comments about that?
Madam Mayor, I do.
Yes, sir. Councilman Davis.
I know a lot of the homeless ones that's out there and they have homes to go to here in Douglasville. But most of them just want to walk all day and prowl all day. So, you know, I guess that's the way it's going to be. I go to Kroger, I see them, I talk to them. And I'll say, when you're going back home, and they say they're good. So, you know, that's just something just.
But we just don't want people to feel unsafe if you're going in for people to approach you. You know, as long as they're not aggressive. Is that what you're saying, Ms. Littlefield? Okay. All right. So we'll move on then. Thank you so much for that staff report. We have comments from citizens and delegates and we will go to the first person that's been waiting online, Ms. Fitz. If you can please give us your name and address for the record and then you have five minutes to address your concern.
Ms. Fitz, can you hear us?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I was still muted. First of all, thank you for taking the time to hear me. My name is Jennifer Fitz and my address is 6810 Phillips Mill Road in Douglasville, Georgia. I wanted to talk to you guys about the potential rezoning of, or it's a potential issue of rezoning Pine Drive and Fairburn Road. There's a piece of land right there on Fairburn Road that backs up to the properties on Pine Drive. And I am affiliated with Exodus Ranch, which is located on Pine Drive. It's the very end of the road. It's, the ranch is a 501(c)(3). They work with foster children. They do a lot of community service work and they work with Special Olympics. They basically host and for free of charge do everything for our Special Olympics team in Douglas County. They work with wounded warriors. They do mentoring for at-risk children. And they do all of these and many more things that I can't list, free of charge. All of their programs to the community are free of charge. It serves our youth population, which has very few champions in our community. And the value of the work that this ranch does can't be overstated. So the introduction of rezoning for residential purposes to build condos or apartments on the land that is exactly adjacent to this property would be very detrimental to the work that this ranch does for many reasons. One of the reasons would be noise. So right now, we have a lot of trees that block much of the noise from Fairburn Road. If those trees were to be knocked down and condos or apartments put up, that noise barrier would be gone. And not only is that detrimental to the horses that are on the ranch, if you think about parties, people, noise, Fourth of July fireworks that could cause the horses to panic, it's also very detrimental to the people that this ranch tries to help. You know, children who are in need of mentoring because they don't talk or they can't engage with people are wounded warriors. They are looking for a safe haven. And right now, this place is a safe haven for them. It's quiet. It's serene. It's untouched nature. And you introduce, you know, 600 to 700 people in a condo complex to this area and it's going to, you know, greatly affect that ability for these people to be in a place that's quiet. The other thing that I would worry about as a volunteer and a user of these ranch facilities is that, you know, people will trespass. Right now, the county guidelines only call for a six-foot fence. And again, I remind you, this property is going to, if it's developed, it will back up right onto the ranch property. That's not enough of a fence to deter trespassers. And what makes this part so detrimental to the ranch is that the people who own the business and own the 501(c)(3), are the ones who are liable. business and own the 501(c)(3), are the ones who are liable if any damage happens. So they are not the owners of the ranch, they are long-term leasers, but because they own the horses, that's part of their business, the amount of liability insurance that they would have to increase for, say, if a kid wanders onto the property and gets kicked or bit, or if someone, you know, tries to feed a horse trying to be nice but ends up injuring or killing that horse, that liability falls on the ranch. And they don't have the means to increase their liability insurance because they don't make a lot of money. Any small penny that they get back goes right back into all of these services that I talked about at the beginning that are free. So for them to have to increase their liability insurance can very well shut them down from a, just from a money perspective. And I just ask that you would, you know, in the future, consider not, or voting no to any rezoning requests for this property. Right now, it's labeled as commercial, and I had someone asking before, well, if it's labeled commercial, we could build a mall there, we could build convenience stores. But what people don't understand is that people go into those places and they shop or eat or get gas and they leave. They don't live there. So the amount of time that people would spend in that facility is very small. When you have someone living that close to the ranch, they are there day and night, and there's more opportunity for trespassing. So from my perspective, I would rather keep it zoned as commercial and have something commercial built there than housing where there's more people, more noise, more chance for trespassing.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's all I have to say, and I thank you very much for listening.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Fitz. And I will say, that project is in the county, that is not in the city of Douglasville. We do not have an application for annexation to come into Douglasville. So we appreciate your comments, though. We, if that were to happen in the future, you know, we will have a public hearing at that time, but it's not an issue for the city of Douglasville. But we appreciate you calling and your sentiments. Okay, so we'll move on. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? You're welcome to come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. Come forward, please. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, gentlemen, respectfully, my name is Melody. I live at 2280 Pine Drive, Douglasville. I just, I wrote this down because I'm old and my brains, I can't remember anything anymore. But in reference to all of the zoning and annex changes that we were looking at tonight, I am asking that you consider any zoning changes or annexation that you keep a few things in mind while you're considering. As demonstrated in a recent vote to try and change zoning in the county with over 1,500 people contacting them and telling them they weren't interested in it, for one reason, they don't want more townhomes and development. And I'm not just talking about in the county, I'm talking about in Douglasville, completely in Douglasville and the county. The rezoning, that rezoning may come before you for annexation in the future that she was just talking about, as other things may.
Yes, ma'am.
But many of us moved here because we feel the, it's just got a small-town feel to it, or it did. We didn't move here to live in a smaller version of Atlanta. The best way to grow a community is to make sure its citizens enjoy living here. They want to feel safe. They want a good police department and a sheriff's department. They want to have incentives to have and keep their own homes. Douglasville has the potential to be such a cool, small city, but for that to happen, you must listen to what the people are saying. To not listen means we don't think the people know what's best for them in this community. To not listen says that those who voted really don't matter. To continue to raise taxes and build more and more is not what the citizens want. The citizens are upset right now about many decisions being made in the city and county. And I just ask that before you make any decisions, you truly listen to those your decisions will be affecting. I have lived all over the United States and have traveled all over Georgia. Instead of rezoning and annexation, why don't we concentrate on making this community the kind of place people actually want to live in? More buildings don't do that. People want to feel like they belong, they want to be a part of something. Instead of trying to be Atlanta, why don't we make Douglasville different, better? More community activities, more programs for the most vulnerable? I could be wrong, but I think we only have one facility that does free outreach for the community, and they are in danger. We need to do more things for families and kids. I can live anywhere, but to thrive as a community, I actually need to feel safe and have things to do. More zoning changes won't accomplish that. Less big business and more mom-and-pop shops with business incentives for those businesses would help. Again, please, before you build more or add more, take care of the treasure that Douglasville already is. Remember, some things are more important than money and growth, like taking care of those who already live here so they want to actually stay here, because there's a bunch of people moving out of the city and out of this county. How the citizens of this city, how will the citizens of this city remember you after you leave office? As someone who truly compared about the citizens and what they wanted, or as someone who is apathetic to their opinions in favor of making this just another big city? Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Melody. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Okay. If you don't have any other comments, then I will open the floor for a motion to go into executive session.
I'm moved.
Thank you. So it's been properly moved and second to adjourn to executive session to discuss a personnel matter. All those in favor of a adjournment to executive session after a five-minute recess, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have, we are adjourned to executive recess after, executive session after a five-minute recess.